At this time, we're gonna, everybody ready?
Yes.
Alright, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have a presentation, the NYSC LSA conference presentation with Mrs. Doctor and students.
Good evening.
Hello, my name's Annabelle Kozlak, this is Mrs. Olivia Doctor.
My name's Trey Amec.
And I'm Sophie Donovan.
There was another one with us, but unfortunately she couldn't make it tonight, but we all attended NYSC LSA. So for you that don't know, it's the New York State Council on Leadership and Student Activities. This year's theme was Leader to Rota-ship. Thank you. It's a three-day learning experience that has certainly impacted all five of us. Yes, you can build on your leadership skills that you also grow as a person from this experience. From learning how to overcome hard challenges you'll face in life to being the best version of yourself to having a good mindset. We left on Sunday, November 11th and arrived later that day in Syracuse where we were greeted at the door and then brought to the main ballroom where there was different activities to get students from all the schools together and interacting with one another. Each night, we all had a buffet-style dinner with a variety of different foods where we all would discuss our day and what we have learned. So this was us when we left the school. And then when we arrived in the big ballroom. And at our dinner. On the second day, we all had different colored shirts to wear, which separated us into groups that we would travel with throughout the day and into stations. At one of the stations, we got to hear from Kyle Wilkum, a sought-after keynote speaker and author from youth audiences across the United States. Kyle wrote the book called Pack Leadership where it talks about characteristics needed for leadership, practical methods and steps to be a leader, and how to reflect and improve your skills. Kyle now travels the country with his guitar, giving interactive, life-changing, inspiring speeches to motivate and challenge students to set goals, accomplish big things, and to be better versions of themselves.
On the second day, we also went to roundtables, which is where different schools present activities and fundraisers they do. This is where we got the raider races idea from, and that, or reindeer, right? Arctic raider races from, and that was pretty fun. We also did breakout rooms, which were led by other students, and we learned the importance of keeping a good balance in our day-to-day life and schedules, and the importance of looking at things in life more than one way. Later, we got to hear from Lilian Prado Correo, a refugee from Guatemala, who came to the US when she was four years old and was raised by her father. Lilian had an exceptionally challenging life, but she didn't let any of her challenges stop her. Instead, she worked hard to get a full scholarship and went to college, became a teacher, and later became a speaker for empowering people to never give up.
After all the activities, there was a nice hot dinner, then an award ceremony where one student from each school district was selected and got a leadership award. Following the awards, there was a ball for all the students with a DJ, cookies, drinks, bracelet making, and games. And Annabelle received the award. On the third and on the third and final day, we ate breakfast, then got to hear from our third and final speaker Lamar Wambel, a life and leadership coach who helped you reflect on your life and make you realize how important some of the people you have in your life that are always there for you and expect anything and everything in return.
The next year will be in Lake Placid, New York. It will be November 24th to 26th for the conference.
Thank you. That sounds like you guys had a lot of fun.
Next, we will have the MTSS update, mental health update, secondary school update from Mrs. Gregory and Mr. McDonough.
Well, thank you all very much this evening for welcoming us this evening. We just wanted to have the opportunity to speak to you about the initiatives and the progress that we've been making for MTSS, for integrated co-teaching and our mental health, our mental health initiatives across the district, and I'll be speaking specifically to the high school. Just as a quick review for the MTSS, it's a multi-tiered approach. It's a collaborative effort that our teachers do in the classroom, and it provides them the opportunity to personalize instruction and also put interventions in place for students that might be falling behind academically, behaviorally, or emotionally, so that we can make sure that they stay on track for them to be successful. We also have the opportunity this year, and I will talk a little bit more in, and a little bit more in-depth in regards to the integrated co-teaching. And that's the opportunity for both our gen ed and special ed teachers to work together collaboratively in the classroom in order for them to better meet the needs of the students in the class. And also it provided us the opportunity to make a more inclusive education in a classroom setting for all students, both gen ed and our students with disabilities. And last but not least, we'll also be talking about our mental health initiatives. The big one that we are, have been working on this year is this hashtag same here. Our mental health initiatives are ones that allow us to help students emotionally, psychologically, and socially, help them with the struggles and stresses of everyday life and help them make good choices and help them work through that. So we'll be talking to that, we'll be talking to those pieces this evening. And how these direct, how these relate directly to the goals. A lot of them are directly reliant to the programs, interventions, and the curriculum that we already have set up by the district. So these, we made sure that they are in place so we can maximize the students' abilities and opportunities for them to be successful across all platforms. Our goal too is, and this is really a lot of the work that we've been putting in, and we've been putting in at the high school, especially with integrated co-teaching, is providing equity and celebrating diversity and an inclusive education and fostering that welcomeness in the classroom. So that regardless of whatever student's background that they are coming from, that we are putting them in a place where they're welcomed, they're engaged, and that they're, that they're welcomed and that they can be successful. And Mrs. Gregory, we'll talk a little bit more about MTSS.
Okay. So if you recall from last year, I, I went into great detail about MTSS and what it is. So I'll just give you a little quick review. When we talk about a multi-tiered system of support, there's three tiers. Tier one is the core instruction and supports that are provided to all students, no matter what. Tier two is when we have some small groups of students that need a little extra support in addition to tier one. And then tier three, we have some students who need individual help in addition to what we can provide in tiers one and two. And we have this type of support available in both academics and social, emotional, and behavioral areas. So what did we focus on this year in 2324? We needed to do more training with the teachers to make sure that they really understood MTSS. We wanted to improve documentation of what we're doing in terms of interventions and student progress with those interventions. We needed to increase collaboration, especially at the secondary level. We needed to get teachers talking about students and helping each other help them. We also implemented a new data dashboard called Branching Minds. So last year at this time, when I presented to you, we were right on the verge of starting our MTSS support team, which is a district-wide committee of people who came together to learn more about MTSS than everyone else, become the experts in each building, and to help us as administrators plan for the rollout of this initiative. So these are the people. I am so thankful that we had so many people interested in helping with this. It was great to work with all of them, and it's really made a difference having them have, you know, kind of a upper level of knowledge. So the support team work that they did, they first learned more about what MTSS is, they had to do some training. Then we looked at the practices that were in place in each building and audited them to see what were our strengths, what were our weak areas. We drafted a district handbook, and we planned next steps for the 2324 school year. So we had a lot of different types of training related to MTSS this year. Our support team continued to receive extra training during the school year. They started in the summer with what we called a support team launch. They were the first ones to dig into Branching Minds, the data dashboard, and get to know it better. All teachers had an orientation to the platform in September when they, right when they came back. And then in October, the support team came together again to look at data once our, we had our benchmarks and our student data was in the system. They received more training on all the different ways to look at it and use the platform. And then every conference day this year, we've held workshops for the teachers in the middle and high school building to work on different aspects and just keep plugging away at this initiative. So sometimes we worked on, you know, tweaking our goals to make them better or making sure that everybody had an intervention assigned or looking at progress monitoring data. Most recently, we took time to work with, you know, Pam from Branching Minds again, just this week, and kind of show her where we were at and get some feedback. So we've just been trying to improve everything that we're doing each time. I don't want to get you too in-depth into what Branching Minds looks like, and I also, I can't show you Branching Minds live because you would see student data and student names. So I'm just showing you a few screenshots to give you an idea of what it's like. But when you first log into the system, you see a list of students in the district, and every student has triangles next to them that are different colors. So the triangles represent where the student is at in the different areas. So we have the three tiers, red being tier three, yellow being tier two, green being tier one. And there's reading, math, and social, emotional, and behavioral learning displayed. And so you can get at a glance a snapshot of where everybody is at, and then you can filter the students in many different ways. You could do it by grade level, you can do it by, you know, tier level, like who's tier two in reading and just see those students. We have information in the system, so you could just view our students with IEPs. You could view our students who are in our after-school program. You can view students with active goals and interventions. There's a wide variety of ways you can filter and search the data. And once you click on a student and you drill down, you can see all kinds of information about that student. That whole profile comes up where you can see how they're doing and their actual test scores in the different areas. If they have an intervention in place, you can see like the graph of when it's been administered to them, their progress monitoring data, a lot of different information. And what's great about it, especially at the secondary level, is that all the teachers who have a student can view all of the student's data and know where they're at in every area. They only see their students, but you know, when, when you're in a high school, middle school, each kid has about, you know, six or seven teachers every day. So they can have a better way to collaborate without actually being in the same room with each other. And it's, it's just helpful that way. So I told you, a big part of what we were working on this year is making sure kids who needed support have specific goals set for them, that they have an intervention in place, and that we're monitoring their progress with that intervention. And it's still a work in progress, but we were able to get all of our students who are in tier two and three in the middle school specific goals for them, and we did this by taking our AIS groups. You can create a goal for a group or an individual. So this is an example of a sixth-grade goal that was created in ELA. And you can see the goal, and you can, it's really tiny, you might not be able to see it, but right underneath the goal, it says measured by I Ready, and it says the, like, goal score that they're working for. So that's the assessment that's being used to measure their progress. Also, on every group page and every individual's profile, you see what intervention is being implemented. And what's great about this program is we can enter our own interventions in here or we can choose from a library of things that Branching Minds suggests based on where the kids' needs are. So it's a nice resource for the teachers as well. So this one is for the same group you just saw, so it's tier-two ELA instruction in a small group, two times a week for 30 minutes. And another interesting feature that we've been able to utilize is the family communication template. So we've been able to create like form letters and upload them in the system so that teachers can easily send out their required reports to parents, notifying them that the students are getting interventions and telling them how they are progressing with the interventions. What's nice is, you know, there's code written into the templates so that it will pull their data right in, and just with a little bit of editing, they can easily print a letter. So what are our next steps? We want to continue to expand the use of data to target instruction in a meaningful way and make sure that our students' needs are really being met. Our AIS teachers and our, all of our teachers have worked very hard this year to look at different ways to do this. We have AIS teachers using a personalized learning program at the middle school, you know, that's part of I Ready, so that kids are getting things online that are specific to their needs while the teacher works with one student at a time to give them that individual support. So we're just looking at improving our practices that way, possibly expanding to our students who are assigned to Learning Lab at the high school level and making sure they have goals, making sure their support is targeted to meet their needs. We just have to continue evaluating our practices and improving them. We also are considering a student support team process, bringing that back at the high school level, just a way for teacher teams to refer a student so that they can get some extra help from a group of other professionals in how to, you know, best meet the students' needs. And of course, we want to finalize and finish our district handbook so that everybody has a resource to refer to to know how we do this here in Eden. I'm going to turn it over to Bill to talk more about integrated co-teaching.
So what's, what's been a really neat piece for me is the opportunity to take, to bring and start to move the integrated co-teaching model up, up a couple notches. What is also nice, it allows us to kind of hit two of the main district goals, and it's also, one is to improve the academic performance of each of the students as well as also increasing the opportunities for an inclusive classroom setting. So for the integrated, so for the integrated co-teaching, it's, it's more than just two teachers in a classroom. It's a model of shared responsibilities that allow professionals to collaborate and plan. It also allows them to assess students. Within that classroom setting, the co-teaching allows the teachers and students to experience benefit a wide range of their teaching strategies, along with meeting the needs of how different students learn. It also allows the teachers and the students to connect at a different level. The additional pieces that it provides, it provides a couple different things. And also by having two adults in the classroom, it puts extra eyes and ears in the classroom. It also brings two teachers together to facilitate a more of a community clap, a community environment. Students are able to connect with each teacher differently. The co-teaching affords both students and teachers more one-on-one time. It also affords them the opportunity, if they want to restructure the classroom while one teacher's taking on a lesson, the other teacher can take smaller groups of students to make sure that they are getting that information a little bit more efficiently. For example, you might have a gen ed teacher in a social studies class who is moving the class forward with, with content. And if the students aren't getting what's happening, the other, or let's just say the special ed teacher provides them that opportunity then to kind of chunk that information and get and break it down to the pieces that those students can understand without the student, and maximizing the time of use in the classroom. It also allows the two teachers professionally to model what teamwork looks like. We expect students to collaborate and work together a lot and often. So it also offers them that model of professionalism and what it looks like and, and ways that using each other as resources to work through content and problem solving. It also allows teachers to also maximize and use their time more efficiently in the classroom. And it also allows, and it also provides a little bit more one-on-one time so that they can create those, so they can create those more authentic relationships in the classroom, which also, I believe, also transitions into a much deeper learning experience. So a couple of things that I'm kind of proud of as far as the, the integrated co-teaching model is last year, we had four sections of it, and this year, we have 15 sections of ICT across the board. What that has allowed us to do is that it's nine through 12, and it's, and it's been able to, and it's, we've been able to do that across all four content areas of the core areas of math, social studies, science, and social studies. So as we move forward with the ICT model, what we're, we've had the opportunity to do an introductory training with Alicia Brown, who was an administrative intern at the time. And we've also had a chance to bring in Susan Hens, who is an expert in ICT, and so we were able to share that with the staff. In order to continue their growth in ICT and continue to build the sustainability of that, we also are working on having them, having our ICT teams go to other schools and do visits so they can see what it looks like, be able to think and share with other staff, like what, what are the nuances? What are we missing? What do we need? How did you make it work? And allow them to be able to go and visit. And then obviously, we will continue to provide the coaching and the support that they need so that we can make sure that the integrated co-teaching is sustainable and helpful for both them and at the end of it all, that it's, it's most successful for the students. Well, right now, what we're doing, so right now, what the model we're using right now is a gen ed teacher and a special ed teacher right now. And we're trying to maximize some of our special ed teachers that also have dual, dual certification in that content area because that just enriches the whole classroom as a whole. So we're trying, that's where we're starting now. We kind of want to make sure we, everyone gets dirt under their feet and then move it from there. But we thought this would be the smarter approach from the beginning, just because it kind of blends those two worlds really well. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to talk about mental health. And if you've been on our Facebook or our website lately, you know, we've just been doing a lot with mental health or mental wellness lately. So all the different parts of our mental health initiative that have happened so far, we had all the staff, you, you know this already, trained in youth mental health first aid. We annually have a mental health night where families can come out and participate in different activities and learn about mental wellness. Our students at the middle and high school had like a six-week program they went through in PE class this year to learn more about mental wellness. And then, of course, we had our big initiative, which was Same Here, the Global Mental Health Movement. So when it comes to Same Here, we did three big sessions, and every time we did one of these events, it was a two-day thing, and we had started with a staff training on our conference day, followed by a parent training at night, and then student assemblies in every building the following day. We did that in November, January, and March. We just did it this week, actually, in March. So we've covered pillars one through three in the program. Pillar one was all about creating a common language for talking about mental wellness and how, you know, people really should be more comfortable talking about it. Pillar two was all about the Same Here scale, which you've probably seen posted around. It's all the different colors, and it's a way to talk about how you're feeling that can relate to everybody because they're familiar with the scale, and they learned about how, you know, people fluctuate and go up and down on the scale, you're never stuck in one place. And pillar three, this most recent one, we talked about mental health and its effects on the body, and something they call the STAR exercises, which are exercises for the brain, things they can do to help themselves feel better and prevent go, prevent a person from getting into a bad place. So a lot of it was breathing exercises, stress management-type things, meditation. We had people singing and meditating and ringing bells and all kinds of fun things. It was, it was great. Bill's going to talk about the Sabers partnership with Same Here, which was super fun.
So we had a unique opportunity to be able to partner up with the Buffalo Sabers. And it was supposed to be earlier in the school year, and then due to the snowstorm, it kind of pushed things back. So we had a group of students, we had about 40 students that went there. They had the opportunity to go to a conference and mental health seminar. They had an opportunity to watch the Sabers actually practice on the ice. They had lunch, and then it was followed up by another workshop, and then they returned back to school, all on mental health. Later that evening, so, and then each of those students were provided a ticket along with one for them and then one for a parent or somebody else that they were able to use for the game that evening, and the Sabers did win that night, which was critical. Also, so before that, about an hour before that, there was a mental health panel, which myself and Lori were invited to be a part of, along with a first responder and another young man who is actually in the mental health field as a counselor. And we had the opportunity to discuss and talk about our perspectives from the district level. What did that, you know, what does mental health look like, and especially coming off of COVID? What does it look like in our building, and what does that look like, and what are the things that we're doing now? It was very interesting to hear the feedback from the first responder and the number of things, and, and he didn't even really get into a lot of things, but I'm sure by the way he was discussing it, it sounded like they saw on the, on the front line, a lot of things happening as a first responder. And obviously, as the, as the mental health expert, and he was discussing what that looked like in the field, and then the panel had an opportunity to ask us questions at the conclusion of that. And then everyone then there would then went to the game after that. So it was a really neat, it was a really unique opportunity, the first one I've ever had, to be able to partner and support what we're doing here. The partnership with the Buffalo Sabers was a really cool opportunity as well, and I think the kids really enjoyed it. It was a neat leadership and opportunity for them as well. So the next steps that we have, we still have two more pillars that we have to get through that we will complete as far as Same Here and the lifesaver training, the implementation for the code, implementation coaching for the staff. And we do also have a Save Promise Club that is increasing in getting the message out as far as mental health and the, you know, the stresses that everyone goes through, that everybody's, is within, within that piece and what they can do. So they had the opportunity to go to a conference and bring that information back. So these are just, these are just a number of the things and initiatives that we've been working on to kind of help the, help support the students here academically, behaviorally, and, and with the emotion, and, and social, emotional.
And then that's
that's a huge picture of everybody on the ice that, that night after the game. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Next, we'll have a budget presentation by Mrs. Feldman.
Good evening, and welcome to the budget update. This is the first time in a while you're going to see the whole budget together. It's one of the first views of the budget that I offered to the board. So what we're going to talk about tonight is the reserves we need for capital project building. Our current reserve is expiring as of, we can no longer fund it as of May of 2024. So we're looking to talk to the voters about whether or not they can authorize us to have another capital project reserve for building. We're going to talk about our voter-authorized reserves that we talk about every year for the budget. We're going to have a budgetary overview, and then we're going to just follow up with where we are in the budget calendar. So what is a capital project reserve? Well, a capital project reserve is established by voter authorization, and the purpose of it is to offset the cost of a capital project for anything that is bonded. And how we fund it is when there's excess money, because a budget is not exact. It's not like we have $5 and we spend $5. We make projections 18 months in advance, and if we have money left at the end, we have places we can place those funds for future use. And a capital project reserve is one of those places. So once it's funded, it can be utilized, and it requires voter authorization to utilize it. And it's specific to a project and specific dollar amounts per the And it's specific to a project and specific dollar amounts per the voter approval. So in May of two thousand fourteen, we this district established a capital reserve for ten years to be funded. Now, the funding ends in May of twenty-four, but the use of those funds continues until it's to a zero balance. Back in two thousand and fourteen, the maximum level of funding was eight million dollars. So the total that we funded over those ten years is six point six million. And the funding that was utilized to offset local costs of project was four point three. And so today we have two million, three hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. And that includes interest earnings on the money that was put in for fund balance. So what we're going to ask the voters in proposition number four this year is to establish a new capital reserve for building. To allow us to fund it for the next ten years until May of two thousand thirty-four. But what needs to happen at this point is a discussion by the board to talk about what would be the maximum funding level they would use, recommend and want us to put in front of the voters. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sertisio.
Okay, just to give a little a little recap. In two thousand and fourteen, the this board asked the voters to approve a capital reserve to a maximum of eight million dollars. The the voters did approve that and over time, over the last ten years, you were able able to fund it to just over six point six million dollars. Four point three or so was used toward toward towards projects. There's two point three million dollars left in that reserve. That money is earmarked for for the next capital project. Okay, and that that's been factored in into any of the planning that we we've done so far towards that next project. Therefore, it's time to decide whether we should ask for voter approval to create a new capital reserve. And the reason you have to create a new capital reserve is because there's a maximum amount of time that you can fund a reserve and and for this particular reserve is ten years, okay? You you have forever to use the money, but you can only fund it to either ten or fifteen years. Historically, our district has chosen the the ten-year window. I will tell you, I I feel is extremely important to ask the voters to authorize this reserve because as we know, construction costs continue to rise. And just just in planning for our next project. We are, we will not be able to do all the work we need to do simply because of cost and being conscious of not wanting to have a negative tax impact on our taxpayers. So number one, I I absolutely recommend that we have proposition number four that we ask the the voters to allow us to create a new capital reserve. And then when it comes to the amount, that's something that needs to be discussed. And as a point of reference, the the amount that the maximum amount in two thousand fourteen was eight million dollars. It sounds like a lot of money and certainly is if it's in any of our pro any of our pockets. But when it comes to projects to towards the infrastructure and improvement in this district. Unfortunately, eight million dollars then doesn't get you a lot anymore, right? So I I would recommend that that from for a starting point. The board think about between the twelve and fifteen million dollar reserve. Now, remember that this would be money that you could save over time. You don't have to fund fifteen million dollars, but you could. If we have a really good year and the and the markets do well and and sales tax comes in much higher than ever anticipated and our costs all of a sudden go down and we we have extra funds to save towards a project. We can go up to fifteen million dollars. Right? That's that's my recommend my recommendation between twelve and fifteen million million dollars. Yes, sure.
Does this have any kind of impact on what the taxpayers would have to?
Excellent question. Absolutely not. Absolutely not. It's there the the funds come from unused unused revenue. Okay, as Mrs. Feldman pointed out, we do our best to be as close as we can in in our prediction of what of what our revenue and our expenditures will be. It's not a, it's not a perfect formula by any any stretch of the imagination. So if there's unspent funds, this is just one of the places where you could save it for for future use.
So the reserve could hold eight million, but what was the high watermark of how much was actually in the reserve? I know we funded it for six billion, but that was used over time. So wasn't was there ever a time when it was actually six million in that account?
No, I don't believe so.
Yeah. Because that was, that was for two capital projects, if I'm not mistaken, so it was funded. Two or three million that was used, it was funded again, that was used. So even though, and and I'm in favor of having a bigger number, but it's unlikely that if we make it twelve or fifteen million, it's unlikely that we're going to have twelve or fifteen million in that account. It'd be nice, but I I mean, based on my time on the board, I don't I don't say that is possible, but we should, we should have that buffer.
Other questions or comments?
I do have a question. How? I think we all understand what you're saying and it and it makes sense. I guess where it gets lost is how it's written. And the day that people come to vote. And I know we don't determine that, but do we have any idea like when do we get that verbiage? So I'm just wondering if we can count like if people have questions ahead of time, like this is what it's going to say, it's going to be five thousand words, but this is what it means.
So I don't know when we get those propositions, Barb, do you know that?
Refresh my memory, are we allowed to post? What the propositions will be ahead of time? Or do you have to wait until the day? I just feel like that's where a lot of the confusion happens when people actually come to vote and they're like, why? I thought when I listened to the meeting, X, Y, and Z was going to be on there. Well, it was. I didn't, you know, people just don't understand because it's so lengthy and there's so many.
So you're you're asking for what are we going to do to educate the taxpayers on what it means? Right? And I think that's I I bear that responsibility. In previous years, I've I've done a number of Facebook videos. I'm certainly willing to meet in any forum that that people are interested in attending. And making sure it's spelled out clearly in the multiple newsletters that go out through our our district. The the legalese is what it is, but the explanation is is what you're asking for.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we could say here's, to use your terms, the legalese. Here's what it really means. And have it like in written form so people can kind of digest it a little bit.
We can do that in our in our own communication. We can do that again through newsletters or through through conversation, through presentations.
Just not on that postcard.
Just not on that postcard, really.
Yeah, to John's point, when you read that final paragraph up there, total funded since inception, six million, six point six million dollars. It looks like we had an extra six point six million dollars and and threw it in there when the reality is it was three hundred thousand this year, six hundred thousand in another year. And so to elaborate on the way it's funded, I think would would help to to educate the the voters on the process of of how we build up a reserve over time to be used for a capital project.
Understood. Any concerns? Other comments? Well, we have, what Barb, what did you say? What was your your date in? Okay, and our next meeting is April sixteenth, right? So I think we should, I what I what I would like to do is give the board some time to di digest this. And maybe have questions that you know that I can answer at another time. But we should have that number settled down by at that April sixteenth meeting. Okay, does that work for you, Laura?
Yes.
Thanks, everyone.
Now we're going to talk about the voter authorized reserves, which will also be on the ballot. So we have a capital reserve for buses and equipment. And so what the maintenance department is looking for is a kivak restroom cleaner for six thousand. A thirty-foot man lift for fourteen thousand and a power washer for a thousand dollars, which equals twenty-one thousand dollars for equipment for the maintenance department. The bus garage needs some upgrades at the fuel island, though they are estimated at thirty-five thousand. We need to replace four twenty-passenger buses for three hundred seventy-three thousand, five hundred thirty-three dollars. We need to replace one sixty-four passenger bus for a hundred seventy thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars. And then we need GPS units for the buses at three thousand dollars. Or the transportation department is requesting five hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred fifty-six dollars. So the total that we would be asking to spend from this reserve is six hundred two thousand, nine hundred fifty-six dollars. We also have a technology reserve and what we are looking for this year for our replacement plan for equipment is two hundred seven thousand, five hundred ninety-nine dollars. And then our camera replacement and additions at thirty-five thousand dollars. That thirty-five thousand dollars will be aided in the twenty-four, twenty-five, in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year at seventy-eight point two percent. So we'll get seventy-eight point two percent of that thirty-five thousand if we spend the full amount back in state aid. So that would totally using two hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred ninety-nine dollars for the technology reserve.
Just out of curiosity, what are those cameras? Are they outdoor cameras and what are they? Okay. Gotcha. Okay, just curious.
And just another quick question. We're only replacing one big bus. Doesn't isn't that lower than we normally do?
It it is. Can you go back a slide? So one of the things, see, this is the first that you're seeing and it's not the first that I that I that I'm seeing it. And meeting with Mary Banco and also with Brandon and Lori. Their original ask to utilize reserves has been reduced significantly. And you're correct, we we did originally, she, there was a request for more big buses, but through discussion, it was determined that the four twenty-passenger buses were were more critical at this point. Critical not only because of need, but but because of availability. Where we needed the twenty-passenger bus previously, they were not available, they're available now. And that's why they're included. So what I asked Marion, again, Brandon and Lori is to take a hard look at what do we absolutely need in the in this budget season and what can we postpone to a future budget budget season? And and the important caveat here is 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 this the money that's being utilized for these purchases or we're going to request to be utilized for these purchases, it's in it's in reserve right now. It's again, no, no, no impact to the taxpayer in this coming May vote. However, as the board is aware, every dollar dollar that we spend out of a reserve, if we don't replace it, it's those are dollars gone. So utilizing those equipment and and vehicle replacement plans that we put together a number of years ago. We're able to be a little bit more strategic in in figuring out what we need now in this budget and still being able to support future budgets. Okay.
I think just so the bus garage knows where our buses is because we've already had some discussion about GPS units where parents would be able to track buses and that fell through.
I the the GPS units, to to my knowledge, and may maybe Laura knows more, are so the bus garages know where the buses are. Not that, not that extended piece that you mentioned.
Okay, right, the extended piece was impractical because of cell phone service in this region. We're now going to go on to the budgetary overview. So every year, the budget is broken down into three parts. They are general supports, instructional and undistributed. So we're going to start with the general support, which covers the Board of Education. And again, I want to remind everyone, the Board of Education receives no compensation for their service to their community. Central administration, which is the district office, the finance, which is a business office. Legal personnel and public services. The central services, which is buildings and grounds. Special items. And special items is things like insurance premiums, the water sewer bill, BOSI's administrative cost refunds on property taxes. So that's what the headings mean. So in two thousand twenty-three, the Board of Education, the voters adopted a budget of thirty-six thousand, six hundred forty-three dollars. Our rollover budget was a little higher, but since then we found out that there has been some restructuring in the insurance billing. So that has gone down to thirty-six thousand, five hundred ninety-one dollars or been reduced fifty-two dollars, point one four percent. Central administration. It was two hundred eighty-eight thousand, six hundred one dollars. It is now moving up to three hundred eleven thousand, nine hundred eighty-one dollars. Twenty-three thousand, three hundred eighty dollars or eight point one percent. The finance office is going from five hundred sixty-seven thousand, four hundred sixty-one dollars. Proposed at this time to five hundred forty-two thousand, seventy-seven dollars. Up seventy-four thousand, six hundred sixteen dollars or up fifteen point nine six percent. Legal personnel and public services is going from a hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred eighty-eight dollars. Up four thousand, seven hundred twelve dollars to a hundred fifty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars, three point oh five percent. Central services is going from two million, eight hundred sixty-seven thousand to three million, nine thousand. Up a hundred forty-one thousand, one hundred sixty-four dollars. Up four point nine two percent. The special items have gone from five hundred forty-six thousand, two hundred twenty-six dollars up nineteen thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars to five hundred sixty-five thousand, five hundred and three dollars or three point five two percent. So the subtotal for general support is going from four point three million to four point six million, up two hundred sixty-three thousand, up six point oh three percent. Any questions?
Can you go through all those numbers one more time?
Yes, because it's riveting and everyone loves it.
How about we go with big numbers?
Instructional, this is where we want to really see our costs increase because it's in our students area. So administrative and improvement is going from one point four million to one point four six eight million, up four point six one percent. Is that better, sir?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, general education from nine point one to nine point two million, up a hundred fifty-two thousand or one point six seven percent. Students with disabilities, I want to slow down here. It's going up from four point nine million to five point eight million, nineteen point two four percent. The caveat with this one, aid follows the year behind. So the cost that nine hundred forty-seven thousand dollar increase, we will receive increased excess cost aid in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year because we have to spend it before we get reimbursed.
So Laura, when the board or the community hears things like expense-driven aid. Is that is is this one of those expense-driven aids?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so if they if they if they hear things about the Senate or the Assembly or even the governor wanting to increase expense-driven aids, that's a that's a good thing.
Yes. Then we have our occupational education. That's our BOSI students is going from eight hundred seventy-two thousand down ten point three eight percent to seven hundred eighty-one thousand. That's simply we have less students participating in those programs. Community education, the big thing in the community education is it also includes the cost for the morning program where families drop off. We have to budget for it, but they pay for it. So it's going from thirty-six, nine to thirty-eight thousand nine hundred forty, up five point five three percent, and that's due to wage increases. The school library and information technology, this is just how the state lumps them together. It's going from seven hundred ninety-two thousand to eight hundred sixty-one thousand, up eight point seven percent. Pupil services. Pupil services is a lot of things. It's the guidance department, it's the nurses. It's the clubs that the students go to, it's the sports, it's the extracurriculars for the district. So that's going from two point one two million, one hundred twenty-two thousand to two million, one hundred forty-eight thousand, up one point two three percent. So our subtotal for our instruction is going from nineteen point two million to twenty point five million, up six point eight percent. Our pupil transportation is going from two point two million to two Our pupil transportation is going from two point two million to two point three million, up three point eight two percent. Part of the reason that's a minimal increase compared to other areas is because fuel prices have kind of leveled off from where they were last year, so we didn't need to budget so much extras there to ensure that we could afford to keep the buses running. Now we have undistributed and it's undistributed because we don't categorize it individually to each of the above factors. So we have civic activities, which is the fitness center. When people do facility use, that's going from thirty five thousand to thirty six thousand up four point one two. This is solely based on the increases for minimum wage. Our employee benefits, they're going from seven point four to seven point nine, up seven point three three percent. But what do they include? They include our social security and Medicare costs as a employer, our retirement costs, our workers' compensation, unemployment, which the district pays a hundred percent of any unemployment costs that are eligible to us, and its health insurance. And why I want to bring that one up last is because where you saw it was at eight point six in the rollover budget, that's because we weren't sure what our health insurance increased costs were going to be. They were sixty thousand dollars because we rebid our health insurance this year. Our debt service is going from two point nine down to two point seven million, it's reducing six point one one percent. Our inner fund transfer remains the same. What is that? The general fund has typically covers losses in the cafeteria. It covers the local share of the special education extended school year. And the a hundred thousand dollars of the capital outlay is included in that number. That number is consistent with prior years and again this year. So our undistributed is ten point five million to ten point nine million, up three point five percent. So our expenses are going from thirty six point four million to thirty eight point two million, five point one nine percent increase. Any questions? Is everyone still awake? So now we're going to look at our revenues. Our property tax remains at zero increase because this Board of Education has given me no directive on where we plan to go for property tax, nor can a decision be made until we have actual state aid numbers. Our state aid is projected to be down to one thousand eight hundred eighty seven dollars because the whole save harmless has been removed and our foundation aid was reduced. And the formula was changed in the governor's run, so we're hoping for some restitution from the legislative. Our federal aid is Medicare and we're believe, why why do we get Medicare? Because we have students who have high Medicaid, I'm sorry, not Medicare, Medicaid. We have students with high needs and when we give them medical services here, OTPT, we are allowed to build Medicaid back for that and that helps reduce some of our costs. Then our miscellaneous and our biggest driver in our miscellaneous is our sales tax revenue and the amount of funding that we have for special education students from other districts whom we charge back. When we have a classroom for special ed students, it's not full here. We allow other districts to share in the costs and to bring them here and we bill them for those. And that is the huge reason for the increase, along with interest income is up a little bit this year. We don't know how long it will stay up, so we're caution in how much we're going to budget for it. But we expect our income from interest to stay a little bit higher. Our inner fund transfer is money that we use from the debt service fund to offset some of our costs. And so we're going to increase that from twenty nine thousand to three hundred twenty nine thousand in this proposal. And then our appropriated fund balance and our reserve usage, we're leaving static as we did last year. So we would be going from thirty six point four to thirty six point seven million.
Again, though, in terms of the revenue side, what Laura is presenting is a zero percent tax increase. Okay, correct?
Yes.
And and because again, that hasn't been decided, we need more time to discuss that. And also it's based on the information we know today and what we know today is only based on the governor's run for the budget. Um, I can talk about that more when once, uh, Laura finishes her finishes her presentation. But I just want you to have that that information in your minds before we go to the next slide.
So if we have thirty six point seven million in revenues and thirty eight point two million in expenditures, we have a gap to fill of one point five million dollars. That is the work that needs to be done between now and the budget adoption. Hopefully we'll have an on time budget for that. And then again, this is just a reminder of where we are in the program. March twenty seventh, we have at six o'clock a budget workshop. And that is the next item on.
Okay, go back one slide for me, please. Okay, so, um, expenditures, the 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 money that we feel we need to spend to continue the the fine programming that we have in the district. So, you know, think about the educational programs, think about the edu- uh, extracurricular programs and all those other things that support, uh, the district, okay? Um, revenues, that's the money that we collect, whether it be from from state aid or from taxpayers or those other various sources. When there's a gap, that means we need to look at 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 both sides of of the budget, the revenues, which is, I I'm going to use the word hope on the revenue side and the expenditures and I'll use use the phrase hard work. Um, because one point five million dollars is is a large gap for where we are right now. Um, I can confidently say that we are not going to get one point five million dollars more in state aid. Uh, I hope I'm wrong on that, but I highly doubt that I am. I will tell you that, uh, my advisors are recommending that we utilize the the safe harmless number, meaning, um, expect to to get another two hundred thousand dollars. Um, but beyond that, we're unsure. So that takes us down to one point three. Um, and then we can take a look at some of the other revenue sources and 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 where we think we might be with sales tax and and whatnot. But we have to take a hard look at at expenditures. Now, now Laura, remind me, and in terms of expenditures, we have four retirees.
Correct.
And we we've talked about whether they should be replaced or not. When you plan this expenditure, are those retirees included in this or not?
Their replacements are not included at this time.
For all four?
For three of them, one is included.
Okay, so we we kept what, uh, replacement of one retiree uh, in the expenditure side, okay? And then three, we we plan to not replace, okay? And approximately, how much does replacing a retiree cost a district in terms of not only salary but benefits and and FICA and TRS?
Roughly for a step one teacher, around eighty thousand dollars.
So around eighty thousand dollars for a step one teacher, okay? Okay, so you have about an eighty thousand dollar, uh, buffer in that 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 expenditure side. So we have some work to do, right? We have a lot of work to do. Let me let me open it up at this point for any comments or questions from from the board. Anything?
I think I want to hear what you have to say after this until I have some questions, but you might be answering them as we move on, so.
So, you know, um, I I just want to really give the board an update on on where things are at the state level, to the best of my knowledge. And the way the way budget development works is the governor, uh, comes out with with his or her plan. And Governor Hokel did, uh, and school districts weren't happy about it, of course. And then the Senate and the Assembly, and I said, I misspoke last time, the Senate and the Assembly each come out with their own one house budget. So the Senate has a plan and the Assembly has a plan. And both of those plans at this point are are favorable to school districts. And that's 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 a very good starting point, but they're very, very opposed to the governor's plan. So the next step is negotiations between those three entities. My concern is being so far apart may mean that the negotiations take take a long time. And we are being forewarned to not expect the budget to be on time, um, which is due what, March thirty first, I believe, April or April first, haha. And so we need to really plan as a district for again, for at most another two hundred thousand dollars. So that's where our our hard work comes in, uh, uh, taking a look at where else can we, can we narrow that gap as far from the instructional program and far from student programming as possible. So we've got a lot of hard work to do and 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 my expectation is that we have a better idea, at least internally of what we can do, um, when we meet next week. Um, and it won't be done, it won't be perfect, you're 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 not going to hear that we no longer have a gap next week, but you you're going to hear some ideas. Okay. Did that answer your question?
No, but that's okay.
Well, what are your questions? Everyone, the crowd wants to.
No, they don't want to, no, it's, I don't want to cause undue.
Gotcha.
I'll just see what happens.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Request to withdraw specific items from consent agenda.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
This is now the public comment time, approximate position in time that the board is designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate the representation status. For example, a parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There is a two minute time limit.
Does anyone want to speak?
Emma, anything?
You could have, we'll give you four minutes. You're good, you're going to pass?
All right. But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation, Nate, the resignation of teacher aide Cassan Cassandra Toth be accepted effective March twenty second, twenty twenty four. The board and administration wish to thank Ms. Toth for her one year of service to the district.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of senior clerk typist Susan Wazik be accepted effective July first, twenty twenty four. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Wazik for her twenty six years of service to the district.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of bus attendant Kimberly Mazurkowitz be accepted effective March twentieth, twenty twenty four. Note, Ms. Mazurkowitz is resigning the bus attendant position in order to accept the position as a bus driver.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Diana Corcoran be permanently appointed as a teacher aide effective March seventeenth or twenty seventh, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Skip it. It's okay. We'll vote on it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
The man behind the curtain is running that.
The all powerful us.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period, Michael Sitzman be permanently appointed as director of facilities three, effective March tenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want the board to know that earlier today, uh, Mrs. LaRosa called me and she said, could we make his permanent appointment contingent on him fixing the roof? And I said, I said, no. That's all.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried. Congratulations.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period, James Sullivan be permanently appointed as a bus driver effective April third, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Dwight Seymour be appointed on probation as a bus driver effective March twenty one, twenty twenty four and ending November twentieth, twenty twenty four. Salary is based on CSCA contract level nine, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Kimberly Mazurkowitz be appointed on probation as a bus driver effective March twenty one, twenty twenty four and ending November twenty, twenty twenty four. Salary is based upon CSCA contract level nine, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Daniel Field be appointed on probation as a part time bus mechanic effective March twenty one, twenty twenty four and ending November twenty, twenty twenty four. Salary is based upon CSCA contract level eleven, step four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Michael Sitzman and Brandon Watson be appointed as the workplace violence prevention coordinators.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Rita Stur had election inspector Karen Cornell, Virginia Gunther, Anne Sheehan and Barbara Caffrey be appointed as election inspectors for the annual meeting and budget vote on Tuesday, May twenty one, twenty twenty four at a rate of fifteen dollars and fifty cents per hour and further authorize the district clerk to fill any vacancies in these positions which may occur prior to May twenty one, twenty twenty four within individuals from the Board of Elections Inspector Personnel List.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Patty Dallas appointment be amended as follows. Patty Dallas be appointed on probation as a part time cafeteria monitor, level two, step three, and a part time bus attendant, level four, step three.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the hours for bus driver Cynthia Casper be increased to seven hours per day effective March twenty one, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the overnight student leadership conference, March twenty eighth, twenty twenty four to March twenty nine, twenty twenty four be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the request to lease bus, school buses and drivers for the Eden Town Recreation Department, summer twenty twenty four field trips be approved, dates and times to be determined.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the proposal for architectural services for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five capital project be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Need to go back one. I don't think you did the boys and girls.
No, we didn't.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the request to lease school buses and drivers for the Boys and Girls Club of Eden Lakeshore, summer twenty twenty four field trips be approved, dates and times to be determined.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following items be accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate. A nineteen fifty four. A nineteen fifty Ford tractor. Do you want me to read that? No, okay. You don't like hearing my voice? With two thousand and eight Freightliner. The Tanco snowplow ten-foot asset, or ten foot, sorry. The two Kyvac restroom cleaners. The N S S wet vacuum. Truck attachment snowplow six-and-a-half-foot Fisher. The truck attachment snowplow ten-foot. The truck attachment snowplow ten-foot Tanco. And the truck attachment salter back ox six-and-a-half-foot.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, an oven with the asset tag self- that be declared accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school calendar be approved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick discussion, um, although I, I have not heard anything specific. If in the final budget, uh, budget that's adopted by New York State, there's any additional holidays that we are required to observe, there will be changes to next year's calendar.
Are there talk of more holidays?
There's always talk of more holidays.
Oh my goodness.
Usually it's snow days and it's teachers and not children, but that's different. There are, there are, there is talk of more holidays, but I don't know that that's going to happen, sure.
Okay. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the bus route spreadsheet effective February sixteen, twenty twenty four be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a resolution dated March twenty 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 four of the Board of Education of the Eden Central School District, Erie County, New York, calling for a vote on the establishment of a new capital improvements reserve fund of the district and the ultimate amount of and providing for certain additional details with respect here to there to.
Any dis- oh, somebody's got a second. Any discussion?
Do I have to fill in a number?
No.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
So, um, Mrs. Thomas Will.
Yeah.
Is it, is it important to have this, uh, um, voted on by the board today? And if so, can you explain why? It's for the establishment of the Capitol Reserve.
Right, and it is important because I have to have that in the legal notice, which I have to have
Yeah.
ready for the paper.
Okay, so what you'll be voting on board is whether or not to, uh, establish a, um, a capital reserve. Let me, let me correct that, whether, whether you will ask the voters if you can establish a capital reserve. From our previous discussion, um, I, I feel that you probably need more time to determine the amount of that capital reserve. So is it, uh, Mrs. Thomas Will, is it, can we fill in that amount at a later time?
Yes.
Would that be another agenda item for the board to vote on?
Uh, yes, they have to vote.
Okay. Okay, so we're still under discussion, so, um, if the, if the board wants to discuss an amount or is comfortable, I, because I made an assumption that you may need more time to di- to digest and think about an amount. But if, if you want to discuss that at this point, or if you want to just vote on it a- as is, that, that's your, that's your prerogative.
Like, Jeff, do you, do you think it's necessary to go above the twelve? I mean, I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable with the twelve, my concern is that going all the way to fifteen, uh, I mean, that's, you know, they're all, they're both big numbers, so to be clear, but um, that's, that's a pretty impressive jump from eight to up to, to nearly double, whereas um, eight to twelve is a thirty-three percent increase, and given the escalation and the cost of, uh, construction materials, labor, and since that other one was approved a decade ago, a thirty-three percent increase is perfectly reasonable to, uh, a hundred percent increases. I mean, but if, if you thought it's fifteen, you, you work on the numbers more than we do, then, you know, I would, I would certainly support that.
You have a very, very good point, uh, and I appreciate you, um, sharing earlier that, that, that reserve is funded, utilized, refunded, and, and was never funded in totality, so that had me rethinking some things as we sat here. I, I think the critical point is, is a minimum of twelve million dollars. Uh, I wouldn't go below that. Uh, it's, it's twenty twenty four, and we see, we've seen with the escalation in, in, in costs that have happened, and you hear about um, what other districts are facing in terms of, of their bids on their projects. And it's hard to project what, what things are going to be like in twenty thirty-two and twenty thirty-three and twenty thirty-four, which is essentially what you're also planning for. You know, we're using two-point-three million dollars in our next project that, you know, we're going to go to voters in, in December of twenty twenty-four. Um, and we, you know, had we funded that to a full ten million or been able to, and I understand why, why you can and you can't, um, then maybe we'd be able to offset that next project by four million dollars instead of two-point-three. So trying to project out ten years from now, knowing the, the life cycle of our boilers and, and some of the, you know, in, in where we'll be with parking lots at that time, and hopefully we'll be in great shape with roofs, even although GLP will be ready for a roof right before I'm ready for GLP to need a roof. Um, just trying to, trying to make sure the district has that opportunity to save enough for that early twenty thirties project. So, that's why, you know, I said when I talked earlier, uh, twelve to fifteen, but if the comfort level is at twelve, then, then we go with twelve.
Well, you know, the, the point that you made is this is not next year's money, this is next decade's money, and so, um, you know, if if the board thinks going to fifteen, because it is a ten-year um, bucket of money to be, to be used, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, uh, as long as we get the word out that, you know, it's not been funded maximum in the past, and we wouldn't expect necessarily it will be in the future, but it's there.
Right, because we don't know, like, like you said, roofs, right? How much is that going to cost in the future?
How much does a roof cost ten years from now? Yeah, good question.
Well, hopefully ten years from now, uh, at least two of our roofs are, are under a thirty-year warrant, twenty to thirty-year warranty. Um, but you're also, you have to think too, i- i- that we're going to have some major infrastructure issues we have to address with the bus garage. Uh, and, and whether the, the change to zero emission buses, zebbs, that's the new phrase, zebbs, not, not the old place you went to for bad burgers. Zero emission buses. And, uh, um, and whether that changes or not, and I, I don't have any confidence that, that that will change, our bus garage is going to need some significant improvements. And we removed that, that roof from the last project because it was millions of dollars, and we knew that we were going to have to make some major renovations there anyway. So while our next project twenty twenty four, that we'll vote on twenty twenty four, doesn't address the bus garage, you can imagine that within a, within a few years after that, um, the next project this, this district, uh, has to tackle is going to include that, that space.
Is it, is it likely that if we move to electric buses, then that'll come from this fund also, I question how?
I, I, I can't predict that, I, 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 I think that having this fund protects the district for some of those unfunded ma- mandated costs. And while there is money out there, uh, and hopefully that, that continues, um, it doesn't necessarily mean it will cover all, all the different needs to make that transition.
You know, I mean, I, I, I suppose ten years ago, when it was eight million dollars, it was an enormous amount of money to be approved. Um, and it was approved, the, the taxpayers supported the, the concept of having, uh, that capital reserve, so I, I have no problem going fifteen million. A- as long as we educate the voters on exactly.
What it means.
What it means. It's not a, it's not a, a blank check for fifteen million bucks.
If we need it, I mean, you look, there's like cracks in the wall and holes in the wall, you know, it's an old building, I, I don't know, you know, there's, who knows what's going to happen in in ten years and yeah, it's nice to have that money if needed, but hopefully not.
Yeah, yeah, well, another way to look at it too is you're act- asking the taxpayers, if we're able, can we save fifteen million dollars over the next ten years to offset construction costs? If we can, will you allow us to save it in this particular fund? Um, that, that's what a capital reserve is.
I mean, that's, that's fair and reasonable, and again, that's, though it is a big increase, you know, costs are escalating way beyond uh, normal inflation.
So, over comments or?
No, that's okay, go ahead.
Anything else?
So should I say we're, um, if we were able to at some point, it would be no more than fifteen million, but we're not promising anyone that will ever hit fifteen million. So it's, it's there, so like, if we could save and we have a great year, great, we can put them in. Chances are I will never hit that fifteen million, but, but that's all we're saying, so it doesn't really affect anything, it's just saying, hey, if that time comes, that's how far we can go.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, exactly, and so, you know, when you get to the end of the fiscal year, the board and wi- with, you know, le- with leadership input can make a decision, do we, do we, we have some extra funds? Maybe it's a hundred thousand dollars, maybe it's two hundred thousand dollars. Do we want to put it in the, the tax sursuriary reserve? Or do we want to put it in this new capital reserve? That's all it means.
I mean, if everybody's okay, I, I'm okay with approving the fifteen million tonight, so that.
So should I reread that and put fifteen million in?
I don't think you have to reread the whole thing, I just think the ultimate amount of, well, I, I don't want to make that call. That's a barb call.
But do I reread it and put them on? Would you just say second? The amount will be fifteen million.
Somebody got a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the notice of annual meeting and vote be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Next, we have the business report.
Hi again, so, you know, I haven't even had a chance to tell Superintendent Sartisio this, but we applied for a nicer grant for a thousand dollars for our same here mental health program, and we received notification today, we will be getting that thousand dollars. And then, this is an update on the APR and S R grants for COVID relief and how they're being used in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. This will be except for the summer school, there will be one more summer school this summer. This is the remainder of the funds and how they are planned on usage at this point. We have one full-time equivalent social worker, two-point-two F T Es for academic intervention services teachers. We bought some musical instruments, two pianos, three baritones, five tubas, and eleven-string basses. Our after-school clubs and activities that we're planning to fund are our Apex Coordinator, our A E P teachers, our high school musical, three positions, high school activities, clubs, two positions, in elementary activity clubs, three positions, G L P activity clubs, one position. And the summer school, where the students went to the B O C's program for regular education, grade seven through twelve. In August of twenty-two, twenty-three, we funded that as well. And then next year, again, it will have fifty percent of the B O C's program for their regular education students, grade seven through twelve, we will be able to um, fund with these grants, which will expire, uh, nine-thirty of twenty-four.
Next, we have the superintendent's report.
Okay, just real briefly, construction update, uh, hopefully you saw the new softball scoreboard when you came in tonight, really looks fantastic. Um, I'm very happy, uh, and, and thanks to J I Wonko for all his, his work on, on that part of the project. Um, we are still doing some punch list items at the elementary building, but getting closer and closer to uh, being, being done with that project. The other, um, I'll give you just a bit of information, we have received preliminary approval from the National Fitness, uh, and the National Fitness Campaign, uh, that we, we will again, pre- preliminary approval of a forty thousand dollar grant that goes with the outdoor, uh, fitness pad that we had talked about previously, a lot more work to do going forward, uh, in, in, including, uh, working with, uh, um, you know, local entities, uh, for some additional funding on that, so I'll keep you apprised. Any questions for me?
No, but can I go to the definitely?
Sure.
Um, I know it's so like, um, use the COVID funds to fund the social worker. So is that now in our budget?
That is correct.
So it's, well, minus obviously the instruments, but is all this in our budget? Right now for next year?
Yes.
Thank you.
Student report.
She had to leave because bless her heart, she thought the meeting was going to end at seven, she thought it was going to be an hour. She did email me, um, every, and she has everything on here literally from the beginning of the year, um, I'll read it. So she just sent it to me, um, so our last meeting was in February, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so do you want me just read everything since then? Okay, alright, so I'll read her notes. Um, alright, the middle school and high school enjoyed the musical Footloose from March seventh through tenth. Forty middle school and high school students attended the same here presentation and Sabers Practice on March twelfth. On Friday, March fifteenth, the high school student council attended their yearly team-building field trip. This year's trip was to get air and lunch at Sonic. Also, yesterday, March nineteenth, the students participated in the third presentation from same here with a special guest Leroy Collins. Next week, we are having a spring spirit week. Um, which Monday, it's barbecue dads and soccer moms. Tuesday is Twin Tuesday, Wednesday is Adam Sandler Day, Thursday is the teacher-student switch. And, oh, that's it, because there's no school on Friday, so that's that is everything from Traya. I don't want to say her name wrong. She did a good job. She did very detailed, she had the whole year.
Thank you, Traya, AKA John.
I'm filling in tonight.
Um, board report roundtable.
I don't have anything.
I give a student report, I'm good.
Alright, um, budget workshop, March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four, six P M at the middle school, high school library. Um, special board of education meeting Tuesday, April ninth, twenty twenty-four, at six P M in the middle school, high school library.
We're cutting that right off. The April night.
Uh, it's saying, that's a, I'm a special board at, on April ninth. Um, regular board of education meeting Tuesday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, at six P M at the middle school, high school library, public hearing on the budget, May seventh, twenty twenty-four, six P M, middle school, high school library. And annual budget vote, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, nine A M to nine P M, middle school, high school auditorium foyer. But upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person or persons.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one can oppose it, thank you for coming.